Good evening and welcome to Athens City Council at 7:01 PM on Monday, March 28, 2022. And we have two committee meetings tonight. Without any delay, we'll move right into Finance and Personnel, and this is chaired by Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Nisley. And we're starting off tonight's committee with a presentation from Nick Tepey about the Athens County Library Imagination Library Initiative. Nick, please.
And I think what we will do is we'll have Councilmembers— Mr. Swank, you were doing the right thing. It's Councilmembers Crowell, Reisner, Ziff, and Spielness will be up here, and then the others can sit down there. And we'll do the usual switching around, just so we keep consistent with our protocol.
I'll wait till later.
So that—in the order of precedence, it's these committee members first as part of Finance and Personnel when they begin to ask questions, and then the other ones also join in, as well as Administration.
Thank you very much for having me. I'm Nick Tepey, the Director of Athens County Public Libraries, and I'm here to talk to you today about the Imagination Library here in Athens County. Now, before I start talking about the Imagination Library, I want to put my librarian hat on for a moment and talk about why early literacy is important. We know from a great deal of research that before a child can even begin to read, they need to have a huge number of skills in place that are not the sort of thing that just comes out of the ether. A child needs to understand that this is a book, that book contains information, that you hold it this way, that you open it this way, that there are words printed on the page, that those words have meaning, that the words are made up of letters, that the letters have sounds. They need to understand storytelling, story arcs. They need to be motivated by narrative. All of those things need to be in place before a child can even begin to pick up a book at school and learn to read. Now, this is the reason why the Imagination Library was originally created. Dolly Parton started the Imagination Library in 1995 just for her home county in Tennessee. She did it because her father never learned to read or write. She says that he was the smartest man that she knew, but he never throughout his life learned to read or write. And she thought that the best way to solve that was by getting books into kids' hands. The way the program works is a free, high-quality picture book is mailed every single month to children in the qualifying area from birth to age five. And it comes in the mail with the child's name on it. It is their book to keep. The way that they work this is they select the books that they want to produce for the program. They then produce a large number of those books at a very low cost for all of various different affiliates. And they cover the overhead costs related to the book selection, the administration of the database, and so forth. All that the affiliate has to do is pay approximately $2.10 a month per child to cover the cost of the books and the mailing. Now, here in Ohio, there were several counties that were already involved with the Imagination Library, including Green County, which is where Governor Dewine and his wife are from. And they were aware of the program because their grandkids were signed up for it through the Imagination Library in Green County. And Fran in particular really wanted to see this program blown up statewide. So, starting with the 2019 to 21 state budget, any county in Ohio that signed up for the Dolly Parton Imagination Library, half of those costs would be covered by the state. All they had to do was agree to run the program and raise the other half of the costs. They then started a campaign going around the state trying to get as many counties as they could signed up for the program. I was already familiar with the program from my time as the Director of Chillicothe and Ross County Public Library. Ross County had the Imagination Library working in there for about two or three years before I even started as the Director there. And I saw how successful it was. It was the United Way that administered it in Ross County. So, in the end of 2019, Bonnie Ward, the Governor's Representative down here, pulled together a group of community leaders, including myself, Mayor Patterson, to talk about what it would take to get the Imagination Library started here in Athens County. I think that Steve was actually the one who said at that meeting, "We can pull this together for Athens County. There's no question we can make this happen." So, for that first year, we set it up. The library took on the actual administration of the program in Athens County. My Access Services Coordinator, Heather McAlfresh, takes care of approving all of the kids who sign up and making sure that the database is up to date. The Athens County Foundation is our 501(c)(3) partner. They're the ones who nominally hold the mailing permits for it, and all of the funds pass through them to the Imagination Library. And then we solicited donations from a wide range of different organizations around the county. Athens County Foundation has kicked in several times. Ohio Health committed $2,500 per year for five years. The libraries kick in from donated funds every single year. And we also received one-time donations from the Athens Rotary Foundation, the Child Conservation League, Athens City Schools, and we are continuing to solicit funds from local donors as well. So, currently, we have 1,443 children in Athens County enrolled. That's out of an estimated 2,949 eligible children. The Imagination Library uses census data to estimate the number of children ages zero to five in any particular area. So, if you look at the chart I've got there, TEP, that's the total eligible population, that is their estimate for the number of kids of that age who are living in those areas. And then going down the other column, that's the number that we actually have enrolled in those areas. I am still convinced that there's something funky with the number for Ames &amp; Burn, and Shade, Lodi, Carthage, and Stewart &amp; Rome, because if you look across the board, we're pushing 50%. And we're continuing to do things to try to increase those enrollments. So, in 2021, we mailed 15,172 books to kids in Athens County. And I really can't understate how important that is. We live in a book desert in this area. I think that everybody knows that there's really only one bookstore in town. It's great that we've got the libraries in all these various communities, but people still need to get to the libraries. So, there are not a lot of access to books throughout the communities. And in 2021, we sent over 15,000 books into homes in those communities. Putting the books in the homes means that the parents are much more likely to interact with the books and the kid. And the kid is going to be interested in, "What is this thing? What is this book? What are these stories?" All of that is going to set that child up for success when they then finally go to school and learn how to read. Because of the Ohio Governor's Imagination Library, the total that we paid through local donations in 2021 was a little over $16,000. Right now, the only commitments we have for funding in 2022 is $5,500 from the library and from Ohio Health, which is why I'm here talking to you. We have currently 516 children enrolled in the 45701 ZIP code. And I sent that list of all of the kids in that ZIP code over to Mayor Patterson. He reviewed and came up with about 240 Athens City addresses in there, which means that it is costing about $500 per month for Athens City children to get a book mailed to them directly to their homes every single month until they reach age five. So, our request for you tonight is that the City of Athens pledge $6,000 annually to support the Imagination Library Fund at the Athens County Foundation. That would cover 100% of the costs for the kids who are currently enrolled in the Imagination Library in Athens City, freeing up all the remaining funds for the other areas of the county that may not be able to cover those costs quite as easily. And this book that I've been waving around here, this is an Imagination Library book that was sent to my daughter. These are really good books. They have a committee of librarians and educators who select the books every single year. They then contract with the publisher of these books to produce special editions for the Imagination Library. It's branded on there. But I'm happy to pass this around if you all would like to take a look at it. It is a really good book, and it's a really good example of the quality of book that you're getting through this program. So, are there any questions?
Yes, please.
Sorry, I shouldn't have.
That's fine.
Sorry, Sam.
So, my question was, how do people find out about this? How do families find out about this? And what are you doing to promote it? You had talked about that you're trying to, so I was curious about what that meant.
We've done a whole variety of things. Right out of the gate, and then we repeated it this year, we actually had Athens City Schools send out an email blast through their channels to the families in the district, hoping to catch some of the younger kids who might be part of those families or just spread the word. We also worked with Hopewell Health. They have a texting system for the people who are signed up for benefits through them. They sent out a blast through there, and that yielded us, I think, about 40 signups on the day that they sent out that text blast. We have also sent things out through the Fed Hox School District. Obviously, we have it at the library. We're promoting it that way. Job and Family Services at various different points has signed up people as they come in to interact with, to receive their benefits there. Lots of different things, basically whatever we can do to try to get the word out that the program is operating here.
That sounds pretty good.
Thanks.
Please, Mayor. When Oblanus Hospital came on board with this project years ago, again, part of what they were going to do is as children who birthed, that they would try to get the families to enroll in this program too. So, we're literally catching from infancy all the way through. So, that's also another component that was in the kind of getting the word out to people about this program.
And I should add to that, that Oblanus has the intention of actually signing the kids up in the room once their birth volunteers are able to actually come into the rooms. They still haven't restored that program since the pandemic started.
Just one other. There's the Birth Circle Group?
Yes.
You know, and there's other groups like that, I think.
Yeah. And I've actually talked with Ariel Carver about getting the word out through them as well this year.
Sounds good.
Other members of the committee, questions from Mr. Tepey? Other council members? Mr. Swank?
I first became aware of the Imagination Library at Christmas 2016, in lieu of another Christmas gift for my mom and dad. They made a donation to the Imagination Library in Trig County, Kentucky, where my mother's from, in our name. Shortly thereafter, started examining this program and actually contacted the folks at the state, found out that we didn't have it. Couldn't find a 501(c) to partner with to get it going, so kind of put it aside. Got it back out again is when you started your efforts. But one thing I'd like to add, as we consider this to what Nick said, is from a Michigan State University study. Experts unanimously agree about the importance of reading aloud to children. In 2014, the American Academy of Pediatrics, AAP, issued a policy statement recommending parent-child home reading beginning at birth and continuing at least through kindergarten. Behavioral evidence has shown that children who are read to, especially before school entry, experience stronger parent-child relationships and learn valuable language and literacy skills. I have a granddaughter who's eight months old and has 30% hearing loss. We were out of town all weekend, and lo and behold, came back. She got this month's book on Friday or Saturday. This is a great program, and I hope will seriously, seriously considering it, funding it, if not for one year, maybe for a three-year commitment when the ordinance is shaped.
And just to point out, the book that Mr. Swank brought here, the books that are mailed out are appropriate to the age of the child. They select books that cover the entire zero to five age range. The first book that the child receives is always The Little Engine That Could, because that was Dolly's favorite book. And then the last book that they receive is Kindergarten Here I Come, getting them ready to head off to school.
Member Grace?
Thank you, Member Crowell. I just wanted to say that I work for Hopewell, and I happen to work in the building where we see young children every day. And so, please connect with me, because we can definitely give things to parents directly as they come in, as well as possibly repeating the email blasts from the organization, because I work with the early childhood team. So, all of our clients would qualify.
Yep, I'll send that right over to you.
Thanks.
Mr. Reisner, go ahead.
It's not a question. It's just—I just want to say I really, really appreciate this type of program. I think it's just a great idea. I'm just thinking back on my own experience about learning to read. My family was—we're all great readers, you know. My dad probably had three newspapers coming into the house, and magazines, and other books and things. We had these little things called little golden books. You know, I think Kroger sold them, you know, like 25 cents. 25 cents was a lot of money back then. I mean, my father, when he was killed in an accident, was only making like $3 an hour. So, I mean, a quarter was a lot. But my parents bought me books, and I was only four years old. And by the time I started going to first grade, I was already reading. I mean, a dick and Jane just bored the hell out of me. You know, I just, oh, gosh. It's just awful, you know? There's no plot to it. But the—I just want to say this. The—when I was six years old, my Aunt Grace, who worked in Logan, had a—I think it was a Murphy's Department store. They had a little—had some books. She sent me two books. One was called From Then to Now, and the other was called The Sky. The Sky was about the atmosphere and rockets and things like that, which was really neat. The other was about evolution. It was written—I found out later—by a seven-year-old in New York City, whose parents somehow got it published. And it was about, you know, from the creation of the world all the way up, you know, dinosaurs and things like that, which is the big reason why I liked it, because there's a lot of dinosaurs in it. You know, protozoas, and it's kind of boring. But I later somehow got in contact with the author. And I told him that of all the books I have ever read in my life—and I have read thousands, you know. I have a library with probably 3,000 books right now, and I've read almost all of them. That was the most influential book I ever read, and it was designed for a six-year-old. And to this day, you know, I still have my copy. It is—I'll see you at one. I'm 71. It has to be close to 66 years old. Pretty ragged, but I can still read it. And I read it every once in a while. So, the point, I guess, is books at an early age have a big impact on what's going to happen to you for the rest of your life. And I can see why there are some people out there that don't want kids to read things, because if you do, they're going to start thinking. And I think it was Wordsworth that said, "Beware when the great God lets loose a thinker on this planet." So, I'm all for this. We need more thinkers.
Thank you.
So, I think 6,000 is more than reasonable. If it was up to me, I'd give you more.
Member McCary?
Thank you. I appreciate all the positive comments and agree with those. And I'm curious, just from general knowledge, if there are programs that the city is supporting financially that are geared toward children that might be—I'm familiar with some out of a community center, but would they all be, I guess, community center and recreation-related, or are there other programs like this that council's already supporting for children specifically?
Mayor, you want to chime in?
Sure. Over at Sells Park, we do have, you know, the storybook trail. If I'm not mistaken, it's the library that comes and changes that story out periodically to where there's always something new that people can experience. And that's geared towards children. You know, and we're certainly exploring possibly other storybook trails in the city of Athens to kind of enhance that program. But as for other specifics, no. I mean, to me, in my mind, to have a program like this where the city is helping with those costs and the benefits to kids, it's almost like having universal pre-K to some degree, you know, but via books that are being mailed to the families that are enrolled in this program. So, hopefully that answers your question. You know, so there are a couple of programs that are specifically parks and rec-related, and it's those storybook trails.
Thank you.
Other questions? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Tepey. We appreciate your presentation.
Thank you. Where did that book end up?
She wouldn't forgive you if I didn't take it back off.
Okay, we have another presentation. Jesse Powers is going to speak to us about Orca and City of Athens membership. Thank you for being here today, Jesse Powers.
Yes, thank you for having me. So, I'm here on behalf of the Orca Board to discuss the 2022 Orca membership fee. Essentially, according to our bylaws that were updated in 2019, the members of the Orca will commit to three-year payments of $90,000 each year, as agreed to for our bylaws. So, I did send out a Rita head packet. I hope everyone's had a chance to review that, and I will assume that that's the case and not bore you with all the details. But we do have a lot of really exciting progress for 2021. And so, we are the council of governments that was created to deliver economic, social, environmental, and health benefits associated with outdoor recreation asset development, specifically our projects, the Bailey's Trail System. And in 2021, we built an additional five miles of trail, increasing the total mileage of the planned 88-mile mountain bike optimized trail system to 31. That's where we spent the majority of the membership dues for 2021. The second highlight there is that we received a $2 million state budget award to develop the Bailey's Trail System, so trail miles and the adjacent infrastructure needed to support a trail system. This is going to guarantee that we reach a destination-level trail system. So, we've had some great visitation success already. In 2021, those initial estimates were resulted in an additional $5.3 million of economic impact in Athens County from Bailey's Trail System, with 3.6 of that being a direct impact. Those are the draft numbers of the initial impact analysis. So, not something we're publicizing, but for purposes of our conversation, I feel it's appropriate to share that information today. So, we anticipate that to grow even more, as we will at least reach 59 miles of trail with that state budget award. And then the third highlight would be another grant award from the Appalachian Regional Commission to support Orca and partners like ASNAT, Rural Action, Ohio's Winding Road, the Buckeye Trail, in developing the outdoor recreation economy in southeast Ohio. And we're talking about the full gamut of that, from trail construction to providing support for entrepreneurs, and engaging communities in ways that they can reap some of the benefits associated with outdoor recreation. So, I just spoke a lot, really quickly. I'm happy to go into any more detail, or just open it up to questions, whatever. Please, Council.
Well, I'd like to start by thanking you for your leadership in the Outdoor Recreation Council of Appalachia, and specifically the Bailey's Trail Development, and congratulate you on the grants that you received and the Ohio—state of Ohio funding. I think it's really exciting, and I think it's moving quicker than I had anticipated when we first had these conversations a few years ago. So, kudos to you, and I'd like to say your team, although I feel you're kind of running solo. So, you know, I know there are others involved, and everybody's doing a great job, but I know perhaps you could use some support too. And I'd just like to say that from my perspective, I'm in full support of continuing our membership. My first question, though, is what have your conversations with the county commissioners been about membership?
So, again, they're members and complying with our bylaws, and they have paid their $90,000 membership dues for 2022.
Okay, good to know. Thank you very much. Other questions from the committee?
Question?
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
At the rate the trail is being constructed, and with the amount of funds that are coming in on average, do you have any projection of when the trail might reach completion?
Short answer, no. So, we—we're hoping to get around 59-ish miles completed this year. That may roll into next construction season. It really depends on how wet—the seasons are, as to what we can get done. So, what we don't complete in this construction season will be able to roll over. And we'll continue—so, the $2 million state budget award is not that full build-out, so we'll continue to pursue investments to make sure that we can reach that full—that project completion number there.
Jesse Powers, what is the construction season? Is that through like November or something, or?
Like November 1.
Okay.
Right? Yeah. So, probably May to November.
Okay.
Depending, yeah.
Member Spielness?
Yeah, you know, I know that we read this, and I appreciate it. It's very thorough, and I have a few questions. But, you know, we answer to our constituents, and some are listening, and of course, this is available. So, I think it would be helpful for the people who would be listening to this, or might want to listen to this, to get and understand it better, to give us a little bit of a—what do we really hope to accomplish when this is done? What's our—what's our investment going to do for the community that makes this worth it? You know, for my understanding—and I'm not as knowledgeable as some of these folks, I'm new—but my understanding is that the investment here will pay off in health for our community by people using it, but also as a draw for tourists and the businesses and whatnot. And hopefully, where the trailheads are, will help those communities who are adjacent that—they're in, you know, business expansion, whatever. Am I summing that up fairly well?
Yes. Yeah, you're exactly right. We're trying to do all those things, and that's exactly—you know, we want to utilize—so, when we're talking about the Bailey's Trail System, and I guess maybe back up a little bit further, just to provide a little more context. So, the Outdoor Recreation Council of Appalachia is a council of governments. So, the city, the county, villages, and other jurisdictions have come together for the single purpose of utilizing outdoor recreation assets to deliver economic, social, environmental, and health benefits to communities. Our project is the Bailey's Trail System, and what we're talking about is an 88-mile trail system that is professionally built and optimized for mountain bikers. This would be the largest contiguous trail system east of the Mississippi River. So, we're very quickly, upon completion, we're reaching that national stage. And quite frankly, the model in which we've cottoned to this point has already caught us a lot of national attention. So, and we're utilizing the Bailey's Trail System not just to put trail miles on the ground, but we're utilizing the Bailey's Trail System as an anchor asset to secure other strategic infrastructure investments, like the connection of the Hawk Hocking Adina Bike Way, so that when you get off at John Glenn International, you can catch your go-bust to Athens, rent a bike here, and never need a car again. So, we're really being intentional, and so it's going to be providing that extra health asset, which is where, you know, the Athens High School mountain bike team practices. We have trail-running events there, as well as securing those infrastructure investments. And then it is absolutely building this tourism destination. It's no surprise to any of us in this room that Hocking Hills receives over 4 million visitors a year. And they're not very far down the road, and they don't have as good food as us. So, we see that it's possible. And really, we're not even ultimately just a strict competitor with them. We're developing—you know, we believe that there's value, and there's models of this elsewhere, where you can look to an entire region that offers a variety of recreation opportunities, and you're attracting that family of visitors for a week versus the weekender to do only one of those experiences. So, if that answers your question, it's absolutely that. We want to utilize this for lots of programming and working with our schools, and engaging folks in all the learning opportunities that there are, you know, just being outdoors, but also while we're constructing these professionally-built trails.
A quick follow-up with that?
Please.
There was something about encouraging entrepreneurship or something like that. Could you expand on that a little bit?
Yes, absolutely. So, while we are developing these world-class assets, we are going to have a new market of consumers arriving in our adjacent communities. And so, we're going to have—there's opportunities for new businesses to create to meet that market demand that's going to be new and increased. So, really, Orca, we work with our partners, which have been doing entrepreneur support for decades and doing it well. So, when we apply for grants like that Appalachian Regional Commission grant, where we're trying to develop the outdoor recreation economy, we're not just talking about the infrastructure. We're also making sure that our partners at ASNAT and Rural Action have the services that they need to offer paid internships, and offer free entrepreneurship coaching for folks that may be interested in opening up a food truck, or something of that kind of nature, guided tour business, those kinds of things.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, please, Mayor.
Not a question, just an add-on to Councilmember Spielness's question that you asked, Jesse, that is, that, you know, it's—Approximately, Wayneville School came out with a study to where they've already looked at the economic impact in terms of tourism and money being spent. And it's probably in your packet, but it's, you know, 3 million plus that we've seen with just the existing number of trails. You know, the city—what we will use is the money from the transient guest tax, so that it's not coming from the city taxpayers, the general fund that is coming—from the income tax that comes in. The—you know, the other thing is, when you look around, what this is also doing for the other communities, you know, this is really floating all the boats. You look at some of the activities that are going on. You look at some of the activities that are going on in Chancy right now. You look at what will be activities taking place up in Bochtel and in Donville at that trailhead, you know, you're already starting to see county-wide improvements with what's going on. And here too, in the city of Athens, you know, if you think about it, with the good restaurants that we have, you know, the bulk of the beds are here for people that are going to come in for overnight stays. Certainly, amenities if they're going to camp out somewhere, they're going to come into Athens or possibly Nelsonville and stop at the grocery store and pick up the things that they need. So, we're going to see, and we're already seeing, you know, the benefits of having the existing number of trails. But when this thing comes fully built out, you're going to see a lot of change in Athens County in particular. But it has this ripple effect where it starts to influence Vinton County with the Moonville Trail, you know, to where I envision someday for that trail to come all the way into 682 and 56, you know, which will also continue to help raise up our local economy and keep it strong.
Thank you.
Other members of council, Member Spillness?
Just a couple of quick questions. You mentioned that the counties paid their dues for this year. What other political entities also paid dues to ORCA?
According to our bylaws, it's only the two entities with, any entity with a population above 20,000. So, it is just the city and county. Other entities provide a $500 in-con contribution of some kind.
Okay. And the second question, you mentioned the $2 million grant from the state. And this year, be able to go from 31 miles to 59 miles, which is 28 additional miles. That works out to about $71,000 a mile to construct a mile of trail, if that money's being used for that. Is that correct?
It'll probably, it'll vary.
Yeah, on average, yeah. Because you've got water to cross and bridges to build and...
And so, with mountain bike trails, it's really, they go by the linear foot versus the mile, because your miles are very different. So, that 28 number is the conservative side of that. I'm not saying the high number out loud yet. To make my life simpler, but we are hoping for somewhere in the range of 28 to 35 miles. And that's for half of that, that's for $1 million of that $2 million budget. That remaining million dollars, we've got a pending grant to where we're trying to leverage another $1.5 million from the EDA to develop our third trailhead. So, if we don't get that grant from the EDA, we'll be putting more trail miles on the ground and doing a water line upgrade at the Chancy Dover Park Trailhead.
Thank you.
Other questions from Ms. Powers? Thank you very much for being here. Appreciate it.
Yeah, no problem. Thank you all. Yeah, we're really happy and, you know, the projected economic impacts of the Bailey's Trail System were back in 2008, 18, sorry, $40 million in increased spending and 78 new jobs in Athens County. And that absolutely took into account the fact that the trail system would be in such close proximity to the city of Athens and the amenities that it offers. So, we're really thankful for your all's support as well as Mayor Patterson's leadership as the ORCA Chair. And we're really excited to, you know, bring the level of investments to the region that are so badly needed and greatly deserved.
Okay, we're moving on to the next item on our agenda. Authorization to replace the community center roof. We have about $315,000 in Fund 272, which is the Community Center Phase 2 Fund. We have a rough estimate of about $400,000 for the community center roof replacement. This will include an anchor system for the solar panels that will be installed on the roof later. And we need to sort of add that cost to the overall cost, although it will be, as part of that solar project, it will be, it has to be included in the third sun, solar costs for their part of the project for the amortization that will happen over a period of time for paying for the solar. We are asking for authorization to expend, or we will next week. We are discussing tonight this authorization. We will use most of the funds that are remaining in 272 and then we will also supplement from 273, which is the Arts Parks and Recreation Income Tax Fund. Director Stone can speak to this better than I can. Would you like to add to that, please?
Sure. Thank you, Member Crowell. So, the 272 fund, for those of you newer on this body, is the recipient fund for the old levy, the community center levy that stopped several years ago prior to the new levy going into effect. And it's had money sitting in there, generating interest for a few years in anticipation of replacing the roof on the community center. The community center was built over 20 years ago. The roof is getting near the end of its useful life and we're due, actually, you know, at the time, we put a cheaper roof on in order to make the community center actually get across the finish line. And, you know, now we're paying the piper with that. Instead of buying a, you know, a 40-year roof, we bought a 25-year roof at that timeframe. But again, we got a wonderful community center and now it's time to replace the roof. So, we're going to expend the rest of the money in that 272 fund and zero that fund out in order to get the full amount necessary to do the roof. We're going to request an appropriation that you'll see here shortly in another portion of this committee meeting out of 273, the new levy fund, in order to make the full amount to the point that Member Crowell had about the, a portion of this authorization we're asking for being for the solar array racks. The actual funds associated with that will get passed through if this body strikes, you know, authorizes an agreement to do the large solar project that we anticipate planning so that it's amortized out over the 25-year life of that project. But we still have to authorize the full amount for this roof. So, that's what we're asking for, that $427,900 authorization in order to bid that roof.
And if I understand correctly, Director Stone, the project estimate is about $400,000 and that $27,900 is the engineering design?
Yeah, we should get authorized that part as well. Correct. Yeah, because it's all part of one project.
Questions from the committee on this appropriation or this authorization? Yes, Members Spillness?
Point of clarification. Thank you. So, you said we currently have a 25-year roof, which is, you know, at the pretty close to the end of its life. So, I wasn't clear of what kind of roof are we going to get with this now? Is it going to be a 40-year roof? Is it going to be another 25-year roof? Maybe you said it, but I missed it, so.
I will get the exact answer of the estimated lifespan on the new material.
That would be helpful. Thank you.
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, it would be at least 25 years, but I'll find out.
Okay, thank you.
Good question. Other members of council, Members Spillness?
In addition to that, Director Stone, be interested, and you have, I'm sure have to find this out, what effect having the solar panels up there would potentially have on the life of that roof? Because panels obviously will cover some of it. I don't know if it's going to cover all of it, but...
Yeah, our experience with doing this elsewhere is that typically, the connections are warranted for a period of time after they're made on an existing roof. You know, those are typically five years, like a five-year warranty on the connection points. You know, that's what we experienced before with the wastewater treatment, or I'm sorry, the water treatment plant roof. In this case, we're trying to build the two concurrently. So, you know, our hope is that, you know, because they're being built, you know, the flashing is being installed the same time the roof is, that, you know, you're really, you're building the lifespan of the roof around those anchor points and it's, the penetrations are not going later through the existing roof. So, you know, we're hoping to gain years from that. But certainly, I can ask, you know, what they anticipate, any type of lessening of the lifespan of the roof that would come from this.
Thank you.
Other members of council? Okay, thank you, Director Stone. We will move on to the next item, which is a staffing ordinance amendment. We have a couple of items. We have a groundskeeper position that needs to be removed from the non-union pay chart. It is a union position. And we also are discussing a change that we've seen in the city with the parking enforcement team, particularly the meter readers. We had a valued member of the city retire who was our only meter repair person. And now that that person with those specific skills has retired and we have meters now that are the smart meters, the idea by the city administration is to eliminate the repair person position and then make the, all of the parking enforcement positions at the level of A5, which I'm going to ask Director Stone to give us a little more information on both of these, the groundskeeper and the parking meter, please.
All right, so groundskeeper first. Groundskeeper is a position that, when this body approved the ASNAT 2403-1 contract at the end of last year, there was a, groundskeeper position was brought into the union and is approved as a union position. Currently, our non-union pay chart still has groundskeeper identified on there. So, what we're asking you to do is simply strike that word from the non-union pay chart because it's covered in that collective bargaining agreement that you approved last year. So, that's the first item. The second item has to do with the meter repairer and the parking enforcement officers. Currently, in the staffing ordinance, there are four parking enforcement officers and one meter repairer. The parking enforcement officers per the 2403-1 collective bargaining agreement are A4s and the meter repairer is an A5. We have written the parking enforcement officer job description now to include meter repair activities. There is less meter repair activity in general happening because of the purchase of the smart meters that we did several years ago and as opposed to the kind of the clock mechanism that we traditionally had to have one dedicated employee to repairing. In many cases, those systems are boards that get sent in, sent out and then plugged into the new team. So, there's just not as much integral activities that occur in the meter repair world. And so, we were able to put that into the job description for parking enforcement officer. With the retirement of the meter repairer, that A5 position, you know, we're basically proposing that we adjust the staffing ordinance so that there are five parking enforcement officers and zero meter repairers. And that meter, or I'm sorry, that parking enforcement officer position gets moved to an A5 grade. And we have an MOU that this body, that I will sign with the union, but this body will have to approve because it has a financial implication by moving those positions to that A5. And it's approximately a quarter raise, you know, 25 cent raise per hour for each of those parking enforcement officers. We have had a couple parking enforcement officers who have requested not to have to take on those additional duties and remain in A4 until they retire. We've done that before when we've changed job classifications such and that basically they're attrited out over time. So, ultimately, even though this could potentially cost, you know, about $2,000 a year in base salary increase, you know, I don't see it being that at the beginning because of, and when I say 2,000, I mean, that's across the breadth of all of those positions with that quarter, 25 cent raise. But a couple of them aren't going to take it for a while because they're not, they don't feel they're physically capable of carrying the meter heads to and from. You know, they've just requested to kind of keep doing what they're doing. Now, the other benefit that comes from this, and it's hard to put a number on this, but when we're going from four parking enforcement officers to five parking enforcement officers, the increased revenue that comes from that is significant. And parking has been kind of a moving target here over the period of time of the pandemic. But, you know, it would be easy to expect over $1 million a year in revenue coming from collections and then parking tickets from having five parking enforcement officers versus four. So, I'm not saying that's a million-dollar increase. I'm saying going above $1 million. Right now, I think we're around $800,000. Don't quote me on that exactly. But, you know, so ultimately, having an extra parking enforcement officer is going to be a net gain in revenue for the city. And really, with the change of technology, this is the right time to make this adjustment with the retirement of the former meter repairer.
Thank you, Director Stone. Any questions? Yes, Members Spillness?
Yeah, so based on what you've said, it sounds like the kind of person who would want to be a parking enforcement officer might change a little bit because of these change, this change in responsibilities. Is that going to be harder to hire, to find people to do this?
You know, I would argue that all jobs change over time. And, you know, a person who, you know, maybe would come into a municipality thinking all they were going to do is write tickets and check meters. In the modern age, you know, there's an expectation that they're able to operate handheld computers and, you know, deal with computer interfaces as they look at the feedback that we get. And really, what we're asking them to do is from time to time to carry the small amount of coins that we actually have coming into the meters, which previously was a job completely of the repairer. But it's not nearly to the weight now because there's less coins coming in because people are using the cards. And then also, from time to time, to pull a meter head, pull a card out of that meter and bring it back in. So, I don't believe that we'll have trouble if we save in the beginning. You know, this is what we expect you to do. Certainly, the two new parking enforcement officers who started recently were fine taking on those duties and they're excelling at it. And we're really happy with that. So, I'm hopeful that the next one we bring on will be the same thing and then after that, we'll be okay.
Yeah, as a person from Ward 1, excuse me, as a person from Ward 1, voting for having more parking enforcement officers won't make me popular, but I'm willing to listen, so.
You know, parking enforcement officers are a necessary evil. You know, the bottom line is that this government, and I'm not saying our employees are evil. That's terrible. But, you know...
They're quite nice.
One of the biggest assets that the citizens of Athens own are the streets. The purpose of those streets is to allow people to get around and to allow businesses to thrive. And oftentimes, the way that businesses thrive is by turnover of traffic. And the only way that turnover of traffic can be achieved is by parking enforcement officers doing parking enforcement. And so, that's really why they exist. If you had a situation where you didn't have a thriving economy and you had all the surface parking lots in the world and you didn't need to utilize that public property to park cars, you wouldn't need parking enforcement officers. But we do here in the city and that's really why they exist is for that turnover of traffic so businesses can have patrons.
President Nissen?
And so, those parking enforcement officers are also out in the streets in the residential neighborhoods. So, I would argue for your Ward 1, that when you have a problem with parking enforcement, that's who you can call and they're very efficient and they help. And there are sometimes problems in residential neighborhoods. I have one other question.
Please.
Did I understand right? So, we'll need two ordinances likely? Then the one that actually changes the staffing ordinance and then the other ordinance that authorizes you to sign on the memorandum of understanding?
Correct.
Okay. And we'll hopefully take those through around the same time.
Yeah, my goal would be that they both start next week.
Great.
Thank you, President Nissen. Other questions? Just a minute, Mayor. Yes, Member McCray?
Thanks. I was hoping Director Stone might be able to comment on the general workload of our parking enforcement officers in terms of maybe city feedback. Do we get more complaints than we have staff members to address? Or is there the perception that we've needed a fifth person for some time?
The complaints we tend to receive are from businesses who are upset about a lack of enforcement in a particular area. And so, there is a need for this fifth, particularly as we've come out of the pandemic in order to turnover cars so that more patrons can come. You know, the other place that we'll receive complaints will be in neighborhoods for the valuation of the 24-hour parking and storage parking. That has decreased since I've worked here for the city, you know, and that's kind of a function of just society shifting and young people not being, being less likely to bring cars, even though they still do when they come to Athens, they still bring cars. It's not the same as it was, you know, where everybody had to have a car back in the 90s and then really the beginning of the 2000s. So... So, um, but there still is a, uh, particularly in some of the dense areas, there is a, a need to do that 24-hour enforcement and, um, and people will call and complain, uh, about that and then we'll, we'll send the parking enforcement officers, especially if it's outside of their normal route that they will go and, and look for.
Thank you.
Hopefully that answers your question. I can get, uh, Captain Harvey who supervises the, uh, parking enforcement officers could probably speak to all the specifics you wanted and provide all the data you wanted if you really, you could pour over it for hours if you like.
I think that's good. Thank you.
Mayor Patterson?
To kind of follow on with your question, uh, Member McCary, is, you know, we were down, uh, parking enforcement officers and I was getting a number of calls from businesses saying, you know, why aren't you citing these vehicles that seem to be sitting here for, for hours if not a day? Um, and so now with the two new patrol officers or, or parking enforcement, uh, officers, um, that has been alleviated, um, in particular, we were seeing a lot of it on West Union, down the hill, uh, where we have meters. Um, and just as a reminder to everybody who's out in TV land is that, you know, our meters are all in the Uptown area, basically, that, where we meter the parking and it's for the retail uptown and, and the businesses in the uptown area. I'd also like to just mention since we're talking about parking meters is that, um, they are getting ready to deploy the 20-minute maximum parking meters. So again, that's going to, that adds to the criticality of having this fifth, um, parking enforcement person come on to where they're able to get to now these new 20-minute where the plan was putting them strategically in the uptown area to where someone just needs to hop out of the car for 10 minutes, get a cup of coffee, newspaper or whatever, and then get back in and go on their way. Um, and that too requires, um, a little bit higher level of enforcement because of the timeframe being shorter, but, uh, just know that those are coming as well. We've been waiting for those for a while and now they're being installed. Thank you.
Other questions? Yes, Members Swank.
Mr. Mayor, on those 20-minute, 20-minute meters, that's a mouthful, are, is there going to be some sort of visible? Yeah, okay. Good.
No, I, I thank you for asking that because I said we, we need something that's identifiable. Um, and again, they will be 20-minute max. Um, uh, you can pay by the 10-minute, so again, I think it's a quarter for each 10 minutes, uh, but not to exceed 20. Yeah, I think they're, the poles are going to be painted a different color and they're certainly going to be signed that this is 20-minute only parking.
Other questions? Okay, moving on to the next item on our agenda, we will move on to appropriations. Uh, the first item, uh, under appropriations is for $115,900 to the APR income tax fund and as discussed previously in this committee, this is for the community center. Any questions about this appropriation? Other members of council, city administration? Thank you. Next item, and I'm going to try to explain this and then maybe others can help me out. We have budgeted about $312,000 out of that 272, which I explained was that, um, sort of community center phase two fund. It currently has about $314,000, $315,000 in it. Um, and we want to ensure that that does not have a zero balance. So, uh, I know the auditor's not here tonight, I don't know if the city administration, if I have this, can tell me that I have this correct, but the second appropriation is $5,000 to that community center phase two fund, so to make sure it does not have a zero balance.
We appropriated, or we appropriated money as part of the annual budget.
Right.
And then it's continued to gain interest, uh, you know, during the time and, and, um, so, um, you know, my understanding was we actually wanted to zero it out and that was the goal, uh, with this because, you know, this is the last thing we're going to spend out of this. And so I, I think that that, that might be a, um, that, that stuff in parentheses might be, might, might be something that I need to modify, uh, there. But the goal is that we spend it all, basically.
So Director Stone, yeah, I was under the impression when we spoke about this is that the goal was, was to zero it out. But then we had a little conversation and I'm not sure that is correct.
So it's to have a zero.
So, um, yes, Mayor?
But there is the interest, um, that's,
Yeah.
That the auditor, you know, made sure it was clear to us that as we're doing this, that it's still going to be accruing interest until we do finally get the whole account zeroed out. And these are monies too, just as, I think as a good reminder for anyone who's watching tonight, that, you know, for 272, phase two, um, that, those are dollars that can only be used on the community center.
Right.
Because that's the way the levy was structured. Um, and so for the intended purpose fits perfectly. Um, this was just money that was carried over after the, the levy was sunsetted after 16 years and we still had money. So this, this will finally close that out for a good cause.
Other questions or confusion about the $5,000? Mr. Reisner, you gonna?
No, I'm thoroughly confused, but I'll go along with the game.
Uh, we will move on to the next item, which is $20,000 to the street rehabilitation fund. Uh, we have two payments of $10,000 each, uh, that we want to make to the, um, Ohio Public Works Commission. Is that correct, Mr. Stone? Um, and, uh, one is due, or it starts in July and then we owe another in January. Uh, and so, uh, we thought we would get both of these, um, uh, in the works now because, you know, as we know, those January payments are really difficult if you don't do them ahead of time. So, uh, we just thought we would, um, uh, put both of those first $10,000 payments, um, in this, in this ordinance. Anything to add? Oh, sorry. Please, President Nysel.
And so it, what it does is it's an electronic withdrawal from our account in to make loan payment. And so I think if I'm remembering Auditor Heck's comments right, what happens often at the, towards the end of December is boom, January one comes and they have electronically withdrawn the 10,000. So the point is, yeah, to go ahead and appropriate it now, it will be ready then so that when it is withdrawn, uh, we've done the, the right paperwork.
Mayor?
Yeah, it, to do it this way, we're, we're essentially for January's payment, we're paying ahead so that we're always ahead moving forward. Um, so, you know, it's, it's good to get these done and we're going to do this moving forward to just make sense to where we're not waiting until January and then we have to go and, you know, potentially use an emergency clause to, or suspend the rules to get our payment in. So we're just doing it beforehand.
And to be clear, this is the small loan payment for Stimson Avenue.
Right.
There's still the large loan payment for Stimson Avenue, first of which will come due in December.
Right.
And I will come talk to you about that probably after recent.
Right. Yeah, $20,000 a year would be okay, wouldn't it?
Good planning.
Okay, and the final item on our agenda tonight, if there are no other comments on that item, is, uh, $1,000 appropriated to the stormwater fund. Um, and this is for the certified mailings that are necessary, uh, the postage for the certified mailings that's necessary.
That's a lot of stamps.
Um, more information, Director Stone?
Yeah, we should have put more in the budget for this. I mean, bottom line is to enforce, uh, provisions under, uh, Advent City Code 5.07, which is our stormwater regulations that, um, allows to be in compliance with our, uh, stormwater pollution regulations, allows to be in compliance with our MS4 permit from the EPA. Um, a lot of the notice of violations that go out, uh, for this and enforcement actions have to be by certified mail and we should have sort of put more in, in, in the TC300's postage for the budget, so, uh, we did.
Questions from the committee? Yes, Members Spillness?
Being new, I, I'd like a little more clarification. What are you mailing about?
Sure. So, um, this body a number of years ago passed legislation, um, to govern, um, stormwater quality. And it has to do with activities that, that, um, private owners, um, in many cases, people doing construction, but then also other private owners, uh, property, um, uh, who have propensity to or, or potential to, to, um, pollute stormwater, uh, for us to enforce, uh, activities or enforce, uh, regulations that say, you know, don't pollute stormwater. And there's, uh, a permit that the Ohio Environmental Protection Agency issues to the city of Athens as a generator of stormwater. And it's different than, um, the permit that, uh, we get for generating wastewater. So we get a permit from the EPA in order to discharge our wastewater into the Hocking River and they have a series of things that they stick on, um, you know, the, uh, the amount that can come out, um, the certain level of, uh, pollutants that are allowed to be discharged and we have to stay below the threshold and that's that permit. That's just one pipe. You know, with stormwater, there's hundreds of pipes that discharge into the waterways. And so, uh, the mechanism by regulating it is not through, you know, measuring what comes out of a pipe, but instead, uh, through what they call the six minimum control measures. And so there are six minimum control measures that we have a staff member who, uh, enforces those around the city and, and does it through a series of both enforcement actions as well as, um, um, assistance, uh, to, to property owners and developers and people, contractors, uh, to make sure they're doing the right thing. So an example, uh, would be like salt fence that you see around a construction site to keep bare earth from, uh, rainfall falling on it, generating a bunch of mud that then washes that mud off the site into the waterways and, uh, ensuring that that exists and, and is installed properly, uh, when it goes in if, if land is going to be denuded for an extended period of time. That's an example of that. But when there are violations, it's got to be certified mail and, like I said, we forgot to put enough in the budget for that. Hopefully that answered your question. I can link you up with a staff member to talk about it if you'd like to learn more.
Actually, we, I did learn quite a bit about all of that, just not alerting people, you know, about, and all that. So thank you for that. I really appreciate your time, everybody, for being at school on it.
Good, good questions, Members Spillness.
Thank you.
Other members of the committee, other council members? Yes, Member McCary?
I'm curious, are most of the violations from residential properties?
No.
Okay.
No, most of them are from large construction sites.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, but not always, not always. In some instances, um, yeah, I think one of the ones that went out was from a, a small residence that, you know, made some modifications. Occasionally you'll get like, uh, activities, um, thing like someone, you know, not disposing of refuse the right way and, and, uh, but for the most part, it's large construction sites.
We had a recent case where, um, waste oil, waste grease was being poured down into the storm drain. That's the kind of activity that we can't have happen.
Yep. That's an example of like a not construction activity that would also get a violation.
Member Reisner?
Uh, just for my own, uh, stats for my own curiosity, uh, does the, do our permits, uh, that the EPA has, uh, put out to the city, is strictly for the Hocking River watershed? Because we have another watershed and river system within the city limits and I'm wondering, is that covered also?
It is. It's, it all goes down to the Gulf of Mexico, so, you know, ultimately,
Sooner or later, yeah.
Southern two-thirds of Ohio, um, pretty much falls under the same, uh, everybody falls under the same, uh, water quality standards.
Uh-huh.
Now, I know we have a, a portion of the Raking Creek watershed in a portion of the city as well, but by and large, the Hocking River is the main tributary,
Yeah.
That we all discharge.
Have the shade also?
Sure. Well, absolutely.
Sort of.
Other questions? Okay, thank you, President Nysel. That ends, well, it's a personal.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll move on to Safety and Services Committee and that's chaired by Councilmember McCary and joined by Councilmembers Grace Swank and Crowell.
Okay, I think we're ready to begin and this is a continuation of a topic that for this session has most, was originally brought up in February, a desire to improve our city services around recreation, particularly the need for some new tennis courts, uh, which have been in some disrepair, uh, near the community center and then the establishment of some pickleball, uh, courts. And we recently referred this discussion back to committee and we since then have had some input from our Recreation Advisory Board and are back here tonight to continue the discussion to arrive at hopefully some decisions about how to move forward with the construction of these, uh, new services or repaired services in some cases. I believe it might be helpful to start with an update, uh, from Director Stone.
Sure, thank you, Member McCary. So what we're asking this evening is for, uh, an appropriation of $250,000 in the 273 fund, uh, the rec levy fund, um, and then $50,000 in the ARPA fund, that's the 286 fund, uh, for a total of $300,000 to expend on construction of said courts. Um, the authorization will be slightly higher than that. I will include the costs associated with design, uh, in the authorization when that goes forward. I don't have that exact number here, but that money has already been appropriated and encumbered and is being spent as part of the design. So the, the full amount will be 300 and some change as far as the authorization goes, but the new appropriations will be $300,000 with $250,000 from the, uh, 273 fund and $50,000 with the ARPA fund. Um, the other thing that I'm going to ask, um, is that the Arts Park and Rec Director is going to apply for a Nature Works grant, um, in order to help offset the costs of this construction. That said, it's not a sure thing, number one. Number two, it is a reimbursement type grant. And so it would be a nice to get thing as opposed to need to have. We intend to build this anyway, uh, regardless of whether we get the Nature Works grant or not, but that just would be money in the bank then ultimately if, um, uh, if it does get, uh, granted. That grant application is not due until June, but requires legislation for us to be able to apply and that would be about $35,000 potentially that would get reimbursed to the 273 fund should we get awarded that after the project is built. Um, but again, that's not necessary for us to move forward, but it is something that I think, um, this fits into the category of, of, of the Nature Works program and, um, you know, that money could go back into the 273 fund and then be used for other things.
Thank you. Could you also share just a little bit of a summary on how design plans may have evolved for this project?
Sure. You know, I think the last time we, we talked, uh, we had, um, you know, fairly high cost estimate associated with building all of the courts over near the, uh, on the, I guess the, the west side of, of East Park Drive. Um, and, um, one of the major cost drivers with that is site prep in order to fit all that new terrain because of the, the soil conditions and the, you know, there's no base underneath there and you'd have to prepare all that. Um, the revised plans, uh, call for about half the courts and specifically the pickleball courts, uh, in particular, being built on top of the old runway, um, which is, uh, if those of you who aren't familiar, you know, the, the, all of the areas south of East State Street and that portion of the city used to be the OU Airport and there are portions of the runway still present. And so, um, a portion of that runway that's still present is currently behind the existing community center, has about two feet of, of pavement that's, that's there that's available that wouldn't require that, that, uh, earthwork in advance of, of an overlay of pavement in order to prep the ground. And that saves quite a bit of money, uh, on the front end and, and allows for us to drive that cost down a little bit. Does split the courts. The other thing that's, uh, in that the pickleball courts will be there and then the, the two tennis courts are still over on the other side of, of, um, East Park Drive. Um, uh, the other thing that, that does drive the cost down a little bit is already electric present, uh, in that area behind the community center.
Thank you.
Hopefully that answers that.
Yes, so it's my understanding that the location of the tennis courts would not change, they would just be repaired?
No, 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 no. New tennis courts,
Okay.
Constructed on the west side of East Park Drive.
Okay.
Um, and then new pickleball courts constructed on the east side of East Park Drive behind the community, community center.
Thank you. I did have the opportunity to speak to our Director of Arts Parks and Recreation and had asked about a potential timeline presuming that we get a new ordinance going next week, uh, that there might be an optimistic view that we could have all of these courts available by summer '23. Uh, but I don't know if you have any comments about how fast a project like this could come along. I'm sure people would love to have these tennis courts and pickleball courts as early as this summer, but that's clearly not feasible. So would you say next summer?
You know, that's fair.
Yeah?
Uh, yeah, we'll try to go faster, but I think it's fair.
All right. I opened it up to questions from council here.
And just two questions. So you're, are, um, my que, uh, would be about authorizing to apply for the Nature Works grant. You ready to do that? So you'd be ready to have legislation coming forward on that?
I'd like these to move concurrently, you know, just to make things clear, if that's okay.
And then the other question has to do with use of ARPA funds in addition to the 273 funds. And this is my limited knowledge and I know we're going to be participating in a webinar in just a few days to go through the restrictions or flexibility on ARPA funds. So that the ability to use the ARPA funds for that would only be if we took the standardized deduction kind of approach to use of ARPA funds, I believe?
Which is probably what we should have been thinking all along, is using the standard deduction, um, and claim it for lost revenue.
As opposed to unitemized.
Which you can do up to 10 million and we're not getting 10 million, we're getting as much as we're, uh, a little more than 2.5. So it fits with being able to use?
So it fits with being able to use? I would contend it fits whether, you know, whether we did that, took that approach or not, because we're creating more recreation space for our community to get outside where the air is clean and yada, yada. But I think it's appropriate to put an additional $50,000 from ARPA into this project.
And I wasn't arguing whether it's appropriate or not, it's the reporting mechanism by which you do it. Because if you do it at a detailed itemization, you will not be able to use the ARPA funds. This is how I understand it. It's only if we go with a standardized deduction.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I can also add that from my conversation earlier today with our Director of Arts Parks and Recreation, I posed the question as to where this sort of falls in terms of priority based on community input and feedback, and it was her perspective that these really, based on community input, have been some of the highest demand requests for improvements to our recreation services. So wanted to mention that as well, and open it up to questions from council members, committee members. Members Swank?
Thursday evening, the APR Advisory Board had a special meeting. Unfortunately, did not have enough members to have a quorum. Consequently, there was no official action. However, on the city's website, Facebook page, is a recording of the meeting, so you can, you can tune in and look at the discussion. One of the things, and this is to Mr. Stone, one of the things that was shared with us that evening for the first time was the solar arrays, and that there will most likely be a reconfiguration of those. Can you address that? Can you speak to that bit in terms of, the way it was explained to us, a significant portion, and I don't know what significant means in this case, but a significant portion of the array that was going to be behind the library will need to go somewhere else?
You know, that's not final yet. However, we need to be prepared for that to occur. You know, to be brutally honest, we're having difficulty with the Hocking Conservancy District and accessing the land that the Hocking Conservancy District owns south of the Athens Library. Given that the solar project is an investor, it's basically a power purchase agreement where investors front the money, and they build the solar array for the city then to buy the electricity from them, and then after a seven-year period, we'll have the option to buy that back, you know, take out a loan ourselves and buy that array back and then own it outright. And that's, that's the agreement that ultimately this body will have to approve prior to us moving forward with the array project. Part of the land that was originally templated, even though the city cares for it, belongs to the Hocking Conservancy District, which is another governmental organization. As I said, to be brutally honest, they're having difficulty coming to terms with costs to use that space, and so therefore we are looking very hard at not using that space and instead trying to put all of the solar array east of US 33.
So if that were to happen, and the available site would be on the current dog park right now, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, and again, these were preliminary drawings, but in those preliminary drawings from last May, there were eight rows, I don't know if you call them rows when talking about solar, but eight rows. And from looking at this map, there's probably enough room for five more. If we moved all of that from the library over to here, that very well might cover it. What I'm getting at is, this is kind of like when we were young kids and we couldn't play dominoes because we couldn't count, but we could line the dominoes up in a row and push the first one and watch them all fall down. If we move the solar over here, that will eliminate the possibility of putting two tennis courts in that area.
I, I think, you know, one of the pieces of instruction that I gave to the staff members that are working these projects is, if we decide we're putting the tennis courts over there, then we're putting the tennis courts there, we need to find another place for the solar array. You know, one option we're looking at with the solar arrays as we're trying to get the full mount is replacing the panels that currently are over top of the East Rec Center parking lot with more efficient panels. You know, that project happened, you know, about 12 years ago now, and panels are twice the efficiency as they currently are. Now, we don't own those. We still, you know, that's a power purchase agreement too, currently serviced by the same vendor that we're working with, even though it's not owned by the same vendor, it's currently serviced by the same vendor, and one of the suggestions we've made is, hey, buy out that, the rest of that agreement, replace those with, with, you know, higher, higher capability panels. So that would be a way that we can do this. Trying to fit more into the space there in the current existing dog park, in spite of the fact that we are going to put two tennis courts there, is something that I'll, I'll make them do, basically. And we're also looking at the wastewater treatment plant site to see if we can put anything inside the wastewater treatment plant site as well. Part of the problem with that is, and, you know, this isn't a discussion on solar panels, so I don't want to get too much into the weeds, but is, the more you break up the array into little, little bits and pieces here and there, the more efficiency you lose as opposed to, you know, the long, the long runs of arrays. So we're going to make it, we're going to make it work in spite of the fact that we're going to put the two, the two, the courts there. Because it sounds like that's what the feedback from the community was ultimately, was, you know, we'd really like to put the two courts there in order to save some of that space behind the community center for other purposes.
So if we're able to keep those two courts there, and that's reassuring that you're willing to work with that to make that happen, then that leaves the area for the four, four pickleball courts, which would be east of the current, what I'll call ice skating rink. North to south, there's enough room. There's 119 feet of pavement that's on top of the old runway. So we strip those two layers of asphalt off and we're good to go there. The problem is east to west, from the edge of that pavement to the, from the edge of that pavement to the existing roller rink is only 47 feet, and we need 60. So there was some, and again, they did not take official action, did not take official position, did not pass anything. There was concern though, as you'll see in that video, of doing away with that roller rink. It's used for a lot of things, including early childhood program. On days when it's warm enough, they can get kids out on their tricycles and things like that. So to put those pickleball courts in there, we will need to reduce the size of that by about 15 feet.
Sure.
Mr. Mayor? So, and to your point, Councilmember Swank, is that the, the current tennis courts, which are not in great shape, you know, that could be repurposed into something that fits with, you know, some other outdoor programming. I know that the director is looking at that space keenly to say, okay, if I'm going to lose space where the, the outdoor hockey rink is.
Hockey, yeah.
And migrate to something like the current tennis courts, it'll work. You know, it's like, it's like a huge game of chess when you look at the community center campus, is to, like you said, dominoes. I look at it as chess, like, okay, if I make this move, what's got to have to move somewhere else, or what's the counter move to that? So she's, she's looking at all those options as well, since we're talking about this and the solar array, although that's not the conversation. The conversation is about the pickleball courts and tennis courts is where the dog park is. She's also looking at and has gotten public feedback on other locations on the community center campuses to put a large dog, dog park and a smaller dog, dog park to separate large and small canines, which sometimes can be a total disaster with that dog park.
Thank you. Councilmember Crowell?
Thank you, Member McCary. I am not speaking to the city administration here, I'm really speaking to the public and just saying, and feeling that I would, it would be remiss if I did not, you know, bring up other recreation issues. And this is just for the record, really. I am in support of these pickleball courts, I'm in support of tennis if the cost is, you know, is, is right. I have heard from a lot of pickleballers, if that's what we call them, pickleball people, pickle, pickle, pickleers.
Picklers.
And, and some, you know, good friends of mine who, who don't fit the demographic of, you know, being older, you know, they're, they're, they're younger than me, let me put it that way. And so I do think that there's a wide range of people who pickleball is an upcoming sport, I think, and more people are getting interested in it. And, and I think that's great, and I want to, I want to certainly support the tennis and the pickleball community. But I do want to say, and I know that our, our Arts Parks and Recreation Director and the, and the Recreation Advisory Board is aware that our soccer community, our ultimate frisbee community, really doesn't have adequate space to do their sports. And the mayor is well aware of this. Soccer has been in a, in a floodway for, for many years, and it's just very difficult to, to continue to play in that area. And the city is working hard, and, and the Director of Arts Parks and Recreation is working very hard to solve all of these problems. Lot of balls to juggle, and she, and she's doing an exceptional job, I think. But I just wanted to remind council that there are other sports out there that are also very, in the case of, of the soccer community, there's 120 to 150 adults who play soccer year-round, and there are another 200 to 300 children. So there are hundreds of local soccer players, and that doesn't even consider the ultimate frisbee groups that often use the same fields. And I would just wanted to, to say that I'm in support of figuring out all our recreation problems, including this one. Thank you, Member McCary.
Thank you. Questions from other council members? Councilmembers F.
Thank you, Member McCary. I feel like maybe I missed this at some point, but just, is, is there a particular reason that we would look to build new tennis courts? Is like a cost issue instead of rehabbing the current ones that exist? Is it just significantly more expensive to try and strip everything and build it again?
I was just going to say, and then you can certainly chime in, you know, those, the current tennis courts, where they're located, it's not the best location because of high water events, and it, it doesn't have the same substrate that the area that we were just talking about closer to the community center where it's got two-foot of former runway underneath there, where those current tennis courts are does not, it would just, we'd be forever chasing our tail with trying to keep up with, you know, the soils underneath the current tennis courts, which is the problem that we see with those tennis courts right now. So let's get them up onto firmer ground, an easier place to put them as opposed to repurposing, or well, redoing the old one.
Thank you for that question. Members Billis?
Thank you, Member McCary. So I was kind of thinking, do we really need to spend this kind of money on this kind of recreation? And I was kind of going back and forth on this. But we received a letter from someone who actually doesn't live in Athens, and we received letters of various kinds. But this one kind of changed my heart about this, and that is a person who said, you know, there aren't really pickleball courts around the area, and so it can be a draw. I mean, we've been talking about the Bailey's Trail and these other amenities that can bring in tourists and events, and this person was saying, you know, we could possibly have the pickleball courts, I don't know about tennis, but specifically pickleball courts, be another draw to bring in tournaments because there isn't anybody else around who's doing it, and, you know, be part of an overall comprehensive, as we talked about earlier with the, with Orca, bring those people who are going to play, play pickleball, perhaps another family member can do the Bailey's Trail. So we, you know, if we have all these coordinated events, and I thought, that makes sense to me. So I just wanted to tell you and anybody that's listening that I think there is some potential to enhance the community in a variety of different ways, other than health, et cetera, by having the pickleball courts. So, thank you.
Thank you, Members Billis, and Mr. Mayor and then Mr. Swank.
Just to kind of follow on with your comment, there, there are pickleball courts that the city has, and it, but they're painted inside the community center.
Right.
Therefore, you have to pay a membership to use those, and this really becomes a whole different dynamic because they're going to be free, you know? You'll have to reserve the court to play or whatever, but, you know, this is, it's an, you know, an equitability standpoint, that that's what these courts will be, therefore, to where if I'm on a fixed income or whatever, you know, I don't have to worry about paying $5 or whatever it is to go in and use the pickleball courts inside, plus the air's fresh.
Members Swank?
Back to Ben's point, just to give you an idea, what the mayor was describing there, since 1990, 21 times, those courts have been underwater, most recently with the last big flood we had. 21 times since 1990, and every time it's underwater, it just, it would be putting bad money to bad money. In terms of bringing people in, next time you're going up 33, pull off at the Route 328, exit there at Logan, drive over to Logan High School, and look at the new Chieftain Center that they built. I'm going to get to see it inside for the first time Friday night, coaching fifth-grade volleyball. They are bringing in thousands of people. Basketball tournaments, soccer tournaments, not pickleball, volleyball tournaments, charging admissions, selling concessions, these things go on all weekend long, and they're bringing thousands and thousands of dollars in for another type of recreation. So I think your point is well-taken. We build this, let's build it right, and I could see expanding it to some places like over in Parkersburg and Belpray, they've got 30 pickleball courts and have huge tournaments. So this could be an economic driver too, plus it gets us outside and healthy, and I agree with the mayor's point wholeheartedly. It's free recreation we're providing, and that's something the city needs to do from an equity standpoint. Could not agree more.
Thank you. Councilmembers and administration, do we have any questions from audience members or comments? All right, well then, that concludes our City and Safety Services Committee meeting.
And that concludes the meeting, 8:27 PM, and we'll see you next Monday night for a regular business session. Thank you.